Okay, I'm gonna open the meeting and first the notes on Zoom. Remember to speak loudly and give your address and name so that it'll be on to the tape that we record. We don't have any members who are going to be on Zoom, so we don't have to take votes by roll call. But if you don't hear something, let me know so that we can make sure stuff gets heard. All right, first, we're gonna review the May 15 minutes. This is the copy I'm supposed to have? Is this, I'm supposed to have this?
Oh, that might be the original. Yeah.
Okay. Any? Anonymous. All right. Tonight is likely to be the last long meeting that we'll have on 5:30 Glendale. Unless something in particular comes up, I expect to complete the review of all but a few last bits tonight and the bit set, the meeting on the 17th of July. There is a meeting in between, but we're not doing solar on the 9th.
Bonnie.
So the next.
The one you have here is the 9th.
And the 17th.
There's two of them.
The one.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't, I didn't put it.
No.
Well, that's because it was just Glendale.
So the meeting on the 9th is going to have the Scantic Valley Water System, which I know a lot of people are interested in. It's also going to have new poles on Chapin Road and some other electric maintenance, pole maintenance items. And then on the 17th, we're expecting 5:30 Glendale to be the first item on that agenda and likely take a vote unless, as Lotus said, something odd comes up. And then there are, there's the Main Street Bridge Replacement, which is a big one. A couple of NOIs or DAs and some more pole replacements. So the 17th is the next meeting. Oh, 5:30 Glendale. Okay. You're gonna open the continuation. On April 17th, we heard the primary peer reviews of the NOI and the stormwater report by Jean. I don't know why I get hoarse the minute I come in this building. By Jean and Melissa and discussed them. And we had comments by the DEP and the Commission. The proponents in between developed responses to the peer reviews and other comments and submitted them to the Commission and the peer reviewers. On May 15th, the applicants described the new information and revisions they provided in response to the peer reviews. And then Jean and Melissa supplied their new updated second round peer review responses. And we discussed those as well as the need for a review of a few more technical items. In the in-between, I went through all the discussions from the beginning and created a summary list of items that were still needed and submitted a request for extension of the current peer review contract to a third round. On June 5th, we reviewed, revised and signed the extension proposal, which is a contract, and reviewed another set of the submissions, which had been sent back by 5:30 Glendale and discussed concerns voiced in letters, including issues around the Northern Access Road and abutting properties and a draft set of special conditions. We defer discussion of the Riverfront Restoration Plan and the more detailed agricultural plan until tonight. So that's what we'll discuss first. We'll start with Steve Ribery from Goddard Consulting to discuss the Riverfront Restoration Plan.
Hi, thank you, everybody. I don't know if you can pull it up. I'm kind of, I'm about to go on another hearing, so I don't. I wasn't ready for the, for the meeting tonight, if anybody has the plan. But we didn't really change the actual Riverfront Restoration Plan. For the comments, last time, we provided a narrative to go along with it. That's a little bit more explicit on what's gonna happen when and the kind of the logical order of things. And added some more detail to the invasive species removal and what's there and how it's gonna be removed. Those type of details, so it's more, more, it looks more like a spec that contractor can look at and know kind of exactly what to do and what to do where. You guys had some comments on, you know, demarcating the edges. So it's more, you know, visual barrier where the restoration is during construction. So it's, you know, not impeded on or trespassed during, during work and kind of impacted during construction. So we kind of added those details to it. I know at the, the last hearing, there was general talk of concern of turtles on the site. So it was a relatively easy inclusion to add some turtle nesting features into the riverfront mitigation area. And there's plenty of material on site to do it. So I think it's an easy thing to do to kind of add in some extra habitat features to accommodate any, any turtle nesting that might be happening on site. So we added that as a feature into there and kind of supplemented some coarse woody debris to help amphibians and reptiles and stuff kind of around the periphery of the site. So those are the kind of changes to the restoration plan. It was more, you know, enumerating it a little bit more and, you know, putting it in text form. So there's a four or five page text narrative. I could show my screen too, if you guys need me to. I don't know if I have screen sharing permissions or anything, if we need to look at anything on it.
One more doubt? Yes, please. Last of the point, Steve prepared.
Sorry, Steve.
Ted, if it's easier to give access to.
Other than to give access?
Either way.
Shut him off anyways.
I've just got, I've just got my little laptop, so we've got like the screens like buried. I don't have my big monitor like I usually do.
Your host now, Steve.
Okay, do you want me to see if I can share? I think I got it right here. Share. See if you guys can see the monitor. Just about a little bit. Yeah, so here's the restoration plan. We, like I said, we haven't really, we didn't really alter it too much. You know, we kind of refined a couple of things in here, but going through it, you know, we have a restoration area here on the southern side of the array in the riverfront area. And then one here on the northern side, that's the green areas. And all the little dots correspond to different plants that would be going in those areas. This green area in the middle is more of an invasive management zone that's within the existing forested riverfront area. The planting areas are all existing, you know, either pasture or part of the old horse ranch or, you know, disturbed, exposed riverfront right now. So that's areas proposed for restoration. We have fencing on both sides of it.
It was in our folder last. I don't have.
We've got details of the plantings. You know, there's a planting table in here that corresponds to the figures. And then we added some blowups to the area. I don't know if we had those in last time, but we just kind of did some zoom-ins and put it on an aerial backdrop. So there's down here, there's some, this is the zoom-in of the southern area. So it, for contractors, it's a little more legible. And on the other sheet, there's a zoom-in of the, the northern area. And these kind of gray areas in here are some turtle nesting mounds that we'll add out there, which is basically, it's just a sand pile that naturally kind of vegetate over time and give turtles some kind of exposed sandy soil to be able to nest.
Can you point out where the fences are that you were talking about?
Yeah, it's a dotted line on each side. So there's dotted line here, it just corresponds with the edge. And then there's a fence on the backside here. So basically, the whole thing will be encircled with fencing during construction. And once it's, once it's stable, the fence can come out, once it's stabilized. The invasive species area, we didn't propose any fencing. That's just handwork in the riverfront in the wetland, just, you know, hand cutting invasive vegetation. And it's mostly gonna be cut and dab methodology, where you just cut the stem. And then you apply the herbicide right on the cut stump, so you're not having any, you know, ancillary effects to other vegetation nearby. You're just targeting that one plant that, that you really want to get rid of, you know, the multi-floral rose or glossy buckthorn, you know, whatever it is. Most of it's woody invasive, that all can effectively be treated the same way. So that's that.
Glyphosate probably?
Sorry?
Would that probably be glyphosate?
Sorry, glyphosate.
What's your favorite herbicide to use?
Oh, glyphosate, yeah, I mean, I'm not an herbicide treater. I'm not a licensed pesticide applicator, so I don't like to specify exact chemicals. But glyphosate is typically for the woody stem, the most effective. I mean, there's a host of other things to use, but glyphosate's kind of the more tried and true one. There's a lot more newer ones that, you know, that haven't been researched a lot. You know, some people use it, some people don't, but.
I would just point out to who's ever choosing that, that's really close to the water, so.
Exactly, yeah. And glyphosate can't be used in aquatic situations. There's a special, there's a special formulation for aquatic use. I think it has a different, you know, roundups, the terrestrial form of glyphosate for land. But there's, there was an aquatic version of it that has a slightly different chemical makeup. But they would need, you know, a different license to treat aquatically versus treat terrestrially, whoever did the treatment. But yeah, if you want to put that as a condition, I think that's fine. You know, no, no glyphosate use within, you know, open standing water areas or stream or anything like that. I think that's completely, you know, it's a good condition and I don't think, you know, it just makes it clear to everybody that, you know, that they can't do that. And the last page is just, you know, kind of contractor notes about access and mulch and all that kind of stuff. Kind of, you know, whoever's bidding on this or gets the work, it kind of, it's all laid out exactly what they need to do and where, that type of stuff.
In the, in the narrative, you talk about putting in the temporary roads that the machines are gonna use, the machines for digging, et cetera. Where are those roads gonna go?
Kind of, we didn't show them because it's more about like figure it out in the field. But it would just be within this area. If they need to put in like a mat road or something, just to get a bobcat in there to plant the trees. You know, they would just lay the mats down. They might not even need to do it. It could just be all handwork and that road could essentially just be right on the outside. It, when we say road, it's like temporary road just for construction access. Like, I don't know, I'm sure you've seen timber mats on the, on the ever source, the national grid power lines. I mean, it probably doesn't even need to be that substantial. They have things that are made out of like a composite plastic. You know, there's different proprietary names for them, but they basically just look like Legos and you just kind of lash them together and you can drive on them and it displaces the weight.
So we're not talking about any huge machines, just small stuff.
No, 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 I mean, this is, this is like bobcat work to put this stuff in. If not, you know, people with a post hole digger, an auger, like drilling the planting holes and then going out with the plants and putting them in. There's not a lot of plants and not a big area. So most of this can be probably done with handwork with machines. I'm thinking the most they'll have is a bobcat out here.
Okay. Anybody on the Commission have another question? Any question? No? Any resident, any questions?
I just had one admin part. The labeling of the map says 503 Glendale Road, I believe it's 5:30.
Yeah, we could, that's a typo in our, and we can change that easily enough. Unless 503 Glendale Road wants a nice river for restoration.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
No, no problem.
All right, and yes?
John Matthews. Area 2, I believe, that applies residential property. Is that correct?
202, I never remember. Oh, yes.
And the dark line is the property.
Correct, yep.
Is that gonna be issue with having the fence there?
No, it would be, it would be on our side of the property line. We wouldn't be, you know.
Yeah, but the planning board has setbacks, so I just wanna.
Yeah, and I'm not representing.
I'm presuming that a temporary fence would be okay while they're working on it. Okay.
Yeah, this, this fence here is a silt fence. It's not a, it's not a fenced fence.
Yeah, they'll let us know if it's not good. So we may have a follow-up meeting somewhere along in August or something after the planning board sends information back to us, just to be clear. Okay. All right, and now we have Caleb from Agribol Tapes.
See, does that have some connection? Is there a call-in number? I went, is there a, you have the Zoom link? Is there an actual, anyone has a call-in?
Yeah, usually there is.
Yeah, it should be on the town website.
I'm there. It has one for the planning board, doesn't seem to have one for the commission. There's a link and a meeting ID and passcode, not like a number.
I think I've done it.
Well, he may be put off till the 17th.
Dan, do you know?
It should be way down at the bottom of that page, if you go into where it says Zoom.
There's not a serious phone numbers within New York or Chicago, there's numbers that fall, won't see that.
You're in the Zoom box, you went to that one, sometimes it sells you down low.
It's the same number as the planning board.
Bonnie thinks it's the same number as the planning board will have.
Just a guess. How's, how is Melissa and Jean getting it?
Do you, does it make sense to do something else until I can get Caleb on here? And then we'll go back to the agriculture line? So I don't.
Yes. Okay. So we also have Jean Christie and Melissa Cody here from Tyon Bond to go over the third round of, of peer review. So we're, we'll, we will go through that and we may stop you at certain points so that we can stick in some other stuff.
Jean, do you want control, either one of you?
I, if you want to pull up the letter, that's fine, so everybody can see it. I have notes on mine. I don't need to share with everybody.
It's there. Here we do.
The slide?
No. Go down, go out.
Go out?
Yes, use the upper.
No, that's, there is no one there.
No, that up there. There you go, over there, the top.
What, that one?
No, the next one. Okay, no. Here we do three, right at the bottom. Okay, we got it.
All right, so I can start talking. Hi, everybody. Jean Christie, Principal Engineer at Tyon Bond. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So after the early June or during the early June meeting, you know, we were tasked with a number of additional topics to review. I think we have 10 items, specific items to talk about, some smaller and some larger than others. Melissa and I did our peer review in the same letter, so we're gonna go back and forth a couple of times here.
Okay.
So the first one was reviewing the watershed that contributes to the culvert at the northern end of the project. You know, this, we, we received additional documentation that delineates that watershed based on, you know, industry standard practice and reviewing of a desktop model of that system. You know, the watershed size, topography, flow paths, curve numbers, all look adequate to us. So we're in agreement with that sub watershed delineation that contributes to the culvert. That then parlayed into the design of the culvert. Based on the plans, it's a 12-inch round culvert, it can pass the 100-year storm. So I think that the analysis shows that it will pass that, that, that water. One piece that we might want to look at is, you know, we, we modeled the culvert as just a pipe. We didn't look at, you know, we have this embankment of a road maybe in front of it. Does water pond up there and where, how far does it pond into, you know, the adjacent property? I don't think it does. I think it's been sized appropriately, but we might want to just look at that really quickly. Model that culvert as a pond with some storage above it and see what happens there.
Okay, we're still trying to get an outside person to do an actual delineation above that property line. If they can.
That's of the stream?
That's of the subcatchment behind the property line. So if we get that, we could send it to you.
I, I guess that's, that's a confusion because we have something in the stormwater report that shows that sub watershed. So I don't know who, what we're delineating separately.
You, did you actually go out and delineate it? You modeled it?
I think there's a little confusion. I think what Judy's talking about is she is still convinced there's some sort of BBW beyond the stone wall.
No, I'm, I'm more interested in how much water and how it's shaped. So how much is gonna come to that culvert?
Yeah, no, that's what I did and that's what they reviewed.
That's what we have. That's not something that you field delineate typically.
Okay.
One thing that we didn't note in this peer review letter that I know was a topic was the option of the bridge. The bridge obviously maintains the existing flow path. It does not constrict water at all, so water, you know, there's no capacity issue. It's a substantial cost to the project. And at this time, based on the size of that sub watershed, I don't think the bridge is necessary, based on the information that I have right now. So I wanted to add that. We didn't have that, we didn't have that topic in our letter, so.
Yeah, it wasn't for this, for the flow. It was for getting it away from the property line.
Okay. Well, for flow-wise, it's fine.
Okay.
The last piece about the culvert is, I think, the, the sizing calculations for the, the rip rap pad at the downstream end. I don't think we saw that. So that's a, that's a really quick.
Next.
One to fill in.
They know, put that in there.
We missed it, let me know, we can.
Pretty straightforward. We'll, we'll take a look and get it over to you.
Okay. That's it for the culvert comments. Is there any questions?
Well, there's two parts to that, right? There's, there's the rip rap rap outlet pad and the culvert outlet pad. Were those the same thing?
Same thing.
Okay.
All right, and number three is Melissa, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thanks. So this, the comment or the response is to, you know, review the revised summary of Riverfront Area Performance Standards and provide a final summary of resource area impacts was our comment. So there has been back and forth discussion in various documents prior to this regarding landed agricultural use. I defer to the Commission's evaluation of things prior to this, but emphasize that in the Wetlands Protection Act, the definition of land and agricultural use is focused on, excuse me, land within resource areas or buffer zone presently and primarily used in producing or raising one or more of the following agricultural commodities for commercial purposes and its animals, including but not limited to livestock, poultry and bees, fruits, vegetables, berries, nuts, maple sap and other foods for human consumption, feed seed, forage, tobacco, flowers, sod, nursery or greenhouse products and ornamental plants or shrubs and forest products on land maintained in forest use. So whether or not the Commission finds that this is or has been in the past five years landed agricultural use, the Commission is far more familiar with the history of the property and its use. But that is the Wetlands Protection Act definition of that term.
With that. That's at some of the last meeting, Rory said he didn't have issues with that, right? You're not gonna use any of the exemptions for agriculture. I think where it still came up was that in a lot of the narratives, it still, still says it's a farmer, it's in agriculture use. It has been, but it's not currently.
It's in chapter 61B. We have applied for 61A that goes into effect next.
That wouldn't change anything.
Right.
Because that's a tax qualification.
I'm not looking for any exceptions.
Okay.
Then we will move on.
Bonnie, you don't want any exemptions, we're cold.
You tell them the narrative was to detail proposed conditions, which is the agricultural use in addition to the solar, so that's where.
Right, and, and again, in that context, the term in the context of the Wetlands Protection Act has the caveat regarding, you know, commodities for commercial purposes. So if there's an agricultural commodity for commercial purpose, then in the future, a permitted activity would be, could be considered as landed agricultural use in the context of the Wetlands Protection Act regulations.
Without looking for any exceptions.
Okay. So if there's some reason you need it, you can always submit all those documents to the Commission and they can decide.
There is a citation regarding exemptions for minor activities in buffer zone regarding existing fence yards, such as an existing substation yard that does not seem to be present at the project site. The applicant does not appear to be claiming this exemption either, is that correct?
That is correct.
So it was more.
Her paper, right?
Clarification of that particular citation. Getting to the context of the Riverfront Area Performance Standards for 1058 4A, protection of other resource areas. That standard has been met. The project was redesigned to eliminate direct alterations to other resource areas. Protection of rare species, it has been established that the site is not within mapped rare species habitat, so the standard's not applicable and has been met. The applicant 1058 4C, alternatives. The applicant has presented two alternatives to the proposed scope of work, including an evaluation of suitable and reasonably available real estate within the municipality per, oh, bear with me, 310 CMR 1058 4C 2C 1. The standard has been met. And for 1058 4D, no significant adverse impact. The proposed alteration of resource, of riverfront area, forgive me, is less than 10% of the total riverfront area. No alteration is proposed within the first 100 feet and the scope includes restoration of degraded riverfront area. However, and this is where I will defer back to Jean, the project does not currently meet the requirements of the stormwater standards entirely. So there is an open-ended discussion to be continued regarding further comments in this letter. And then I just noted, there was a clerical, I believe it's a clerical disparity regarding clearing and grading. clearing grading within the twenty-five foot no disturb zone. Um, in a previous document, it was noted as six hundred eighty-three square feet. In this, it's six ninety-three. I think it's a minor clerical error, but I don't, wanted to point out the disparity. And that's it for that comment. So the vast majority of the riverfront area performance standards were satisfied or have been by the documentation provided to date.
Okay. So does, uh, Caleb need to go or can he wait?
He, he was trying to get off. I just asked him to let him in. We don't see the way.
I don't see him.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the shade analysis?
All right. So I'm back. Um, so this was number four. Um, we were asked to review the shade analysis relative to hydrological impacts of tree removal. Um, a couple of things we noted with the shade analysis is that, you know, shade analysis is done at the winter solstice, so the worst case. Um, but at that point, that's where the sun is in the south. So, um, while we agree that that is the right time of year to do it, we think that the, that's the maximum clearing limit from the array, um, only to the south and then the east and west are different. We also think that the, the clearing limits shown on the plans appear to be offsets from the property line, not from the array. I don't know if we gotta pull up the plans and take a look at that. Um, they kind of just generally rubber parallel. But they should be offset from the array, not from the property lines to minimize the tree clearing.
Nick, which one has got the shade analysis in it?
The clearing line.
Okay, just go to the plans then. Is it on the?
Yeah, I think I was looking, I, I have sheet C two point three up.
He's in that. Up above.
This one.
Right there, site. Nope, the next one up.
Yep.
Yep.
And I can't see what you're sharing.
You're going, what was the number?
Two point three.
Two point three.
So I, I can't, Judy, I can't see what you're sharing on the screen.
Oh, he's going down to the site plans uh, for two point three.
Okay. So if we, if you look in the bottom left-hand corner, you see a fifty-foot clearing line label and then a dashed line. Um, if that's the clearing line, it looks to be fifty foot offset from the property line, not from the array. So that, I think, may be labeled wrong.
Update you on the plan. That's not a limited disturbance line. That's like the, the town no clearing fifty.
That's a planning board line.
That's a, that's a zone.
My confusion.
The limit of disturbances has always been that purple.
The purple line. Okay.
Right on, on.
I, my apologies. That's my mistake.
Well, I mean, you can see we do dip into there because that area is already cleared, um, in, in some parts, you know, so that's why that goes down a little bit further.
Right here.
Yeah, yeah. Because that area, that's part of the track area. That area is already cleared.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so, so my concern may be much less at this point. Um, we can take another look back at that. You know, thank you for the clarification. That was our mistake. Um, we can take another look at it and see if there's any areas that we're concerned of, but briefly looking at these, at the plans and what the provided clearing limits are, I think we're okay. But I can definitely revisit that one.
For the most part, we tried to keep it as tight as we could on the back right of the property, um, where we're gonna have the hay field. We clear, we show a little bit extra clearing, uh, just to have that uh, hay field available to us for the agricultural use, but it's nothing major.
Can you pull that down if it takes? Relevant to that, um, it's not relevant to the shade, but it's, um, that line is really tight against the panels and I keep wondering where the trucks are gonna go. They have to go do maintenance or.
Oh, there's, uh, I think there's, that's.
Aren't they gonna be driving in the riverfront?
No.
They're going outside that fence.
No drive.
Well, they have to construct it and they have to go back and check it.
There's, I think, there's about twelve.
Going to clear vegetation.
Fence, this.
Against the dome of where the fence goes.
Between the fence and the panels?
Between the fence and the edge.
So they could go inside the fence?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, they could grab a pickup truck.
Okay.
That, that's why I didn't plan that. I'm not willing for a pickup truck. It is tight, you know, we wanted to keep as much restoration area as possible, but, uh, you know, and then.
But I just know from other projects, sooner or later a truck has to go out there. Okay, um, now if it was on this side where the space is, what about the backside where it really is right up against? It doesn't look like there's twelve feet there.
What are you talking?
Right there on the backside of this array, yeah. Because otherwise it goes outside the fence. It's going to be right, right up next to the BW, right?
Well, you have the, that's the twenty-five foot, you know, disturb line.
Yeah.
Stubby the fence.
Can it? Can it do everything from that inner road and not, and not have to ever go out to the edge?
Yeah, I mean, there's still access. How much space is between the panels?
It's enough AC to a module.
Yep. It's still grab a bobcat through there. You can still get small equipment in between the rows perpendicular to the.
You don't have, um, your interconnects between the rows of panels are the other?
It's clear, but each module is connected together and then the, the, the ends are connected underground.
Underground, so your truck can pass through.
Yes, well, all that's done before I ever touch a module. So all the underground conduits are the first thing we do. Because otherwise I'm mucking it up when I put the rack in.
So they can drive up and down each, each row.
Well, that brings up another question I had, which is uh, does there ever have to be maintenance on those underground conduits that are under each array?
I hope not. I think that's, that would be catastrophic.
That's why we put them underground. It's like any other utility line. I mean, it's the only reason what someone would happen to it would be it would get crushed from a vehicle driving over it itself.
So then you'd like have to pull out all the panels or something?
We test everything. So basically you, and then you test the wires to make sure everything's fine and then you do. You need some sort of baseline.
And it'll last for all.
Once the rack goes in, it gets very tough. But we do do a good job making sure that it's not, not broken.
The conduits just carry the wire. Wire can always be pulled. Like a new wire can be sent through the conduit sleeve. So as long as the conduit sleeve isn't damaged and the, the wire gets cut, you'd have to have something heavy pushed down on it to actually break that PVC pipe.
Or an earth plug.
Yeah, right.
Hey, dude, before they go, we like mark every pile location. So they know where everything goes and then we do. So there is like a method to the maintenance, make sure that we don't you say break conduit.
Any questions?
Hmm, how far underground is the conduit?
Three, six feet.
Six feet.
It may be a deep as six feet. I think it's three to six feet is pretty reasonable.
Any other questions out there? Oh, we're stopped. Okay, sorry, Jean.
No problem. Um, the other piece of this one was, you know, asking what is the hydrologic impact of tree removal? Um, you know, we think it's our opinion that the, the way that has been modeled is appropriate. Um, we've modeled an existing condition with trees and then a proposed condition without with the solar panels, um, and think this is industry standard analysis. So we're okay with that. And note that that's your response to MASTEP. Um, so.
Review.
Judy, are you set? And if you had a question?
He's finding the peer review. It's, it's hard for him to switch back and forth between the review and the, the submitted materials. Go. Well, I, there, okay. There you go, the bottom one.
I was on the wrong bit.
All right, okay.
All right. So number five was, um, taking a look at panel orientation, um, as compared to topography. Um, in general, a solar project are, our dream and our goal is to have, um, you know, your panels oriented parallel to your topography so that when runoff comes down the panel, it will continue to go, you know, in the same direction. Won't change direction and won't channelize. Um, there is, in, in general, I think that the project is, it works. There's one area on that same sheet, C two point three, on the right-hand side of the roadway, where we do have some perpendicular orientation that I have a little bit of a concern about only because that area is really steep. I think it might be like maybe twenty percent or so, twenty-five percent. But, um, you know, one piece of this is, you know, and we can get it, we'll get into another phasing discussion a little bit later because that's another comment. But with, you know, your, your construction general permit that you're SWIP, we're gonna have to like really watch your stormwater in this area, I think. Um, during construction especially, it's gonna be a challenge. Um, you know, we're gonna definitely want lots of construction period controls in this area. Um, and I know we don't have to have that nailed down yet. That is usually a contractor thing. Do you wanna look at a plan?
Is it this one? Back in the right one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because she, uh, took a step at a plant, put it in the letter.
Yeah, so it's that right-hand side of the roadway where our panels are perpendicular to the topography. It is pretty steep. So this area, um, we're gonna want some to pay more attention to it during construction, a little more care. You know, making sure that we get full stabilization because that's going to solve a lot of problems. Um.
Christine, so in other situations I've dealt with, I've, um, you know, maybe I put in maybe two rows of just, uh, almost like riprap, um, intermediate rows to kind of break up the flow as it's going down that steeper section. Uh, is that something that you think would help here?
I, I think there's lots of solutions, you know, um, we've seen many different types of things. We've seen like a whole channel down parallel to the panels. I like the idea of intermittent, kind of, they're almost like stop logs, right? Where check dams. Um, and I think that, I think that's, that's definitely something that can work. Um, I think what we're gonna find though is we're gonna try a couple of things during construction. So, you know, we can definitely propose something at this point. Um, but then, you know, we always have to be prepared.
We were talking about was pulling some of the panels apart so the water went down through. Did I understand that?
That's I, I think that's probably, it may already happen. And I think, um, I, I agree. That's another technique that you can use is to put gaps and that's, that was recommended through MASTEP's guidance on solar votaic systems. They don't give a lot of detail of what that means though. That's the challenge. So, I mean, we can look at that. That's probably another option, um, as well. And it may be compounded, you know, a few different things together to fix this or to, to make sure this area doesn't ruin too bad.
Any? You okay?
Yeah, we'll make some notes on the plan.
So we're talking about kind of gabby and basket type things.
Yeah, well, essentially it's just, uh, what I would expect is they would just kind of trench in just two or three foot wide, just bounded section of riprap. Put some filter fabric on the bottom and it kind of almost acts like a check. So the water kind of hits it and kind of disperses through like the larger stone and holds it down and breaks up any of those channelized flow patterns.
Now, how would that affect the animals that are in that field?
They'd only be a couple of feet high, just like a little, and we wouldn't run it.
Don't they have screening over that they could like get their feet stuck in and we got them?
Just, just a little pile of crushed stone, you know, maybe six inch, uh, six to ten inch, twelve inch size, uh, variable sized, uh, stone in that area. And then we could stagger them. So, you know, we, in that lower array section, we put one or two, then we go up to the next section and put, you know, two rows just kind of staggered. So it's not just a continuous, almost like a line.
I like that idea.
Yeah. But we've done that before in other situations and it seemed to work out pretty well. And I think I actually have a section in the maintenance plan that kind of details that um, type of procedure. You do see channelized flow in certain areas to do this, uh, you know, that, that's a, that's a fix that the maintenance crew could do. Uh, so that is in the O and F code that we provided, but you can really show a few spots on the, uh, detail.
All right, moving along. Number six was about, um, some sediment for bay sizing information.
On, and just, um, we, um, remember if I'm wrong, please. Jean said it would say twenty-five percent grade. Is that correct?
Jean, twenty-five percent grade?
That's, that's the note I have, um.
I think that's one of the steepest parts of the parcel.
Twenty-five.
I'm having to provide a specification, see the rack game manufacturers would go as much as thirty-five before. That's right. I think provides are, this is a key, the racky manufacturer, that's the one they're calling it.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm thinking up ten.
He's thinking of flow.
She, exactly.
I don't make sure.
Exactly. I'm, I'm looking at it from flow standpoint. You know, to your point, here we go. If you put the riprap in there as your one and a half inches, there is a possibility that they actually have. I, I believe you'd have to, you know, put a, a, a six to eight inch riprap covered with a, like an inch and a half and then covered with three-quarter stone to be able to stabilize the area for the PDM instead of walking that area. But I mean, twenty-five percent is steep, right?
Yeah, it is. So Nick, is that doable? What he's talking about?
I mean, we'll, we'll discuss with Dylan, you know, what he thinks is most appropriate. He's the expert with the animals. That's not my field of expertise. If he doesn't think that he thinks the animals will have problems with twenty foot long strips of crushed stone, like I said, I'll break them up so it's not a continuous line that we through them.
Yeah, but they're not always that smart. They, they do what they do.
I mean, yeah, if, if he thinks, uh, something
Put up a sign.
Uh, a little bit different is warranted, then, you know, we're more than happy to take a look at it.
That is probably the area of greatest concern. That is the steepest.
Yeah, it's pretty steep. Twenty-five percent is, you know, I mean, it's not flat, but it's not your standard size.
Much for a driveway.
But your standard stabilized side slopes, thirty-three percent, right? Three to one. So, you know, if you think of it in, in that regard, you know, if you have a standard detention basin with side slopes that are you know, open seated or any site that gets developed, all the slopes are essentially three to one, um, around a property. So it, yes, I'm not gonna say that it's not, it's not flat, but it's not incredibly steep. So I just wanna, you know, clarify how steep it is compared to other grading practices that would be used for any type of construction practice. You know, I'm gonna comment on that. Three to one is the standard, uh, the gold standard for stabilizing grades.
What?
Are you okay to move on?
Yes. Okay, am I, and I, have you started the MPDES process? Are you gonna leave that till it's all decided?
That, that gets filed a couple of weeks before construction actually starts.
Okay.
Uh, so looking at number six, we're looking at the sediment for base, um, sufficiency and meaning, maintenance, maintenance planning requirements. We were provided with a detail for the sediment for bay. Uh, the details are adequate in our opinion. We also were provided with the maintenance requirements that are consistent with, um, the MASTEP stormwater handbook, which is, you know, our typical practice for, um, you know, identifying maintenance of stormwater management practices. Um, so we're all set with that comment.
Okay.
Um, okay, then we look at number seven.
We still have Caleb, right?
I don't know. I can't say what, but as soon as we're done, I'm gonna tell him to please call back in so you can see him later.
Okay, she's gonna talk about the agricultural plan next, is why I'm asking.
I don't see him online.
Yeah, I think he's having trouble getting a connection. We may have to just put him on the seventeen.
Um, so the, the agricultural plan was talking about the grass species, what is the selection? Um, you know, how is it gonna grow? How do we have to control it? What medium are we using? Um, and the, the seed mix provided proposed, um, while the agricultural plan doesn't say something specifically, the surface seeding treatment under the array, um, in the site plans indicates four to six inches of clean screened loam. Um, and then the seed mix is a typical one that we've seen in New England. Um, it wasn't anything you know, outside of a normal seed mix that we would use as well. Um, the point of all this is the maintaining maintenance and, you know, consistent, healthy grass growth is paramount to this project. It is really important for stormwater management. If we're gonna have this work the way we want it to, we need the grass. It is really important for stormwater management. If we're gonna have this work the way we want it to, we need the grass. Um, and it's the project's responsibility to maintain the grass and make sure that areas that aren't taking. Are reseeded. And if we have to find a different seed mix, we have to find a different seed mix that grows in that condition. Um, so there, there, the, the commission may want to consider a condition. That requires kind of more long-term, um, inspection and reporting, just to make sure that. The grass is really there everywhere. You know, it's a big site. Sometimes some areas can get, you know, ignored and we've seen this in a couple of different projects of our own. Um, but we just wanna make sure that grass is always growing and we're doing what we have to do to take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
We have, I have to come to you to fill this out. But you will give me the, okay, I didn't miss until that is next. To the backstop. I have to come to you to ask.
Right.
Permission.
I will write in a condition that just has a reporting on it.
General maintenance, some stormwater basins and site that's pretty standard. The yearly, well, like a yearly report.
Well, I think for the grass, it would have to be more often than yearly. I don't think that's often then.
I don't mind with this for year one, because they wouldn't even death with.
Yeah, till it's well established.
If you do that necessarily, I accept a, a year one report.
The thing I'm absolutely terrified the most about this project is that we'll have a storm flow that just carries everything off. So I wanna put all the backstuffs that we can.
Judy, what?
Yes.
Mitch Webber, Mill Road. Uh, I keep hearing talks about, uh, raising animals. Is somebody in charge of running a farm up there or is this?
The owner is a farmer. Um, he's, that's Jonathan Gwannapier there, that's sitting next to you. And, uh.
Well, it's gonna be a, actually a farm.
He's gonna have, uh, sheep, cattle and chickens. That, that, um, run in some of the fields under the solar panels.
Is this new?
No, it's in the original proposal.
Oh, no, no. Has he been raising these animals up here? This is.
Relatively new, yeah. It's not, it's not currently classed. It has been a farm in the past. It's not currently classed as a working farm. But he has animals now.
My, my, my real question is, is it being farmed so that it can solar panel put into agriculture? Man, or is it really wants to have agriculture?
Uh, I'll have to ask you and Jonathan then.
We, we will have to remove any land that we're not using in agricultural use. So it is, it will be in chapter sixty-one A as the by my agro next July. Any land I'm not using, ask takeout. Does that answer your question?
Take out of the project?
Take it out of chapter sixty-one A.
Oh, okay.
Not in agricultural use.
I think the question was, are we putting the solar there because it's going to be a farm set, correct, sir? No, you're putting a farm there because it's solar.
Are you putting in a farm so that you can get it approved as a solar?
We could just do the solar.
That's I think what it's asking.
Has had a farm since twenty twenty-one. So that's what led to that farm was established, which is before the solar. So, um. Okay. In the Commonwealth, there is a special thing, agricultural takes, which this is not. Um, so it is not like solely meant, it, it's meant to have an actual financial layer on agriculture. Solar and agro go together. Because it is, it will be in chapter sixty-one A next year.
Does that help? It's a little complicated because as we were just discussing with Melissa. It doesn't currently fall under the D E P qualifications as a farm, but it is. He is keeping animals there and he's, you know, using them as people would.
We could just develop the site as a solar facility without having a farming component. I think that's what you want. Clarification, yeah. That could be done, but the property owner wants to utilize the land. For farming, so we're looking at this dual use, which would be a good use for this site that was previously farmed.
It doesn't change anything about the part, we don't deal with the SMART program and all the other qualifications. But it doesn't change anything about that either, does it?
And there's no benefits to it. The land wishes, so.
John?
Chapter sixty-one A was for agricultural use. And what that means is basically. I'm, I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit, but, you know, it, it could be honeybees, things of that nature, but rare animals is one of the. Principal things. And it has to be, from the state's point of view, it has to be an active business. In other words. Those animals willing to be slaughtered, whatever, but their use is, um, primarily for saving. So that's kind of a chapter sixty-one A.
So then I would think that the state would have to see that, that. That sort of negative been going on before they could all pay you for sixty-one A. They're not gonna give you the sixty-one A until they.
That's.
See, yeah.
Yeah, but even, even if, what we were saying is that even if they gain sixty-one A, um, from the state. That's still under D E P, doesn't mean they've met the D E P qualifications as a farm. So there's like two whole sets of things. Um, to get farm exemptions, it's even tighter. Um, I think they're very close to meeting the sixty-one A state rules, but not the D E P exemption rules.
And I just didn't wanna confuse that.
Yeah. Okay. I know it's kind of hairy. I do have a sheet on the, the D E P considerations of farmland. If anybody wants to get one, I have a couple with me. Or I can send you one. Okay. All right, Jean?
Okay, so we're moving on to number eight. This is where we get into, um, some real technical. Nitty-gritty stuff with stormwater. Um, we were asked to provide commentary on some new stormwater information concerning peak flows and basins. Um, I guess our first standpoint is we continue to agree with the curve numbers and the modeling. That the applicant has performed to date. Um, we're satisfied with the curve numbers as a post-construction, fully stabilized site. So that means the grass is completely there. We're not dealing with exposed earth. Um, you know, one of the things that we wanted to note was in the number of store, of solar projects that I've been involved with. Throughout Massachusetts and Connecticut, when you reach that full stabilization. The stormwater management features you've built are, sometimes they, they don't receive any water. Um. So I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, the full stabilization, the grass is really still really important. I'm gonna say that over and over again. You're gonna sick of the hearing that. Um, another piece that we were asked to review, and this was based on public comment during the last meeting, was, um. You know, some of how the basins are working relative to groundwater, the groundwater mounding. We did find a couple of things that we think the applicant should address. Um, really just with their groundwater mounding calculations. Um, we don't need to talk about the specifics of that until they've had an opportunity to really look at that and, you know, dive into it. And happy to have a conversation offline to talk about, you know, what we've been recommending in here. If that's okay with the commission, of course.
Yeah, as, as long as it doesn't break the open meeting laws.
If it, it would be just the applicant and myself, I think. Yeah. And Nick, I don't know if that's all right.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll take a look at the comments. Like I said, we just got this yesterday, but.
Understood. That's why I didn't wanna spend everybody's time talking about when you're not prepared, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's complicated. It made sense to me, so.
And the basins are essentially just filled, you know, they're at grade filled slopes, so we have to raise it a foot to make it work. It's not.
Right.
It's not a concern, right? We'll, we'll, we'll.
There's things we can talk about and do there, yeah.
Yeah, so we have no, no problem.
If you had to do that, how would it affect the B V W that's next to it?
By raising?
Cause then you, you, obviously you'd have it raised above where the B V W is, right?
Well, the basin doesn't really interact with the B V W. So that's, the basin's taking flow, and we set them in the lower parts of the site.
But they are right next to it in several places.
Correct, yeah, but, um.
She's worried if you raise it too much, you're not gonna have it.
Then you have flow that comes off that into the B V W.
Well, there is some flow from the side slopes that's just gonna be grass that kind of runs to the B V W. We can't catch every drop of water on the site, right? So we're, we can position those basins and put swales in certain locations to collect. As much as physically possible. Um, you know, as far as the runoff goes from the areas that we're, we're trying to mitigate. And those areas are primarily in the wooded area where we're changing the ground cover from. Western part of the site, there's only one small basin right there because primarily. All that, the whole area is mostly fields already. So we're just. Essentially going from field to field, but field with solar panel, but still considered field.
So it's that north.
Correct. Yeah, up in that area. That's, that, that's the water we're trying to collect. And then slowly release because, uh, of the change in. Surface cover that went over from wooded to, to grass. That's why we require the stormwater basis.
Okay. Okay.
All right, now we're at number nine. Um, this is where the commission asked Tianba to, um, respond to Gary Weiner's comments. Um, the first one in A is in regards to construction phasing and how. Um, in some areas where there's steeper slopes and tree removal, that we're gonna be doing quite a bit of grading. Um, and that we're not gonna be putting seed down, we're not gonna be stabilizing anything until after panel installation. Um, and then another topic about, you know, um, some curve number. Oh, that's next. Hold on. Retract that. So the phasing piece of this, um, what's interesting is that the applicant has stated in, you know, their phasing language. That, um, solar field racking and table installation occur after the site is cut, cleared, and the area has been stabilized. Um, and then that also includes stormwater management features being stabilized. So, you know, these panels aren't going up until we have some vegetation growth. And again, that's my important thing that I wanna reiterate here. Um, so I think with the, the phasing that's been provided to date is, is, um, adequate in our opinion. And will help to, you know, avoid that interacting, the occurrence of a fully unstabilized site with panels constructed.
I had a question about the phasing. Um, phase two is seven point one eight acres. Is it possible to cut that piece in half? So that you do half of it at a time?
So, you know, the, the problem with that is it's the reality of mobilizing. Getting, you know, the tree clearing crews out there and doing their work because, you know, they pull the trees, they.
Can I cut it all? And I, can I stump it and stabilize it at half of it? There's a big machine that comes to cut. Then you can, there's different ways in which you can stump it. If the creature would be okay with cutting it all at once, I would then.
And you would stump it half at a time?
Yes.
Yeah, that's cool. As long as you're not doing that.
Yes, yeah.
I think that works. Cause they'd have to build out, then come in there, cut, stump the lower half, build the basin out. And then seed it. That, that's what I envision happening. You know, when we're talking stabilized, it's not gonna be a hundred percent, right? I'm hoping that they get sixty percent, seventy percent hopefully growth. They'll come in and they'll respray it again to, you know, surface, uh, you know, spot treat areas. Cause, you know, they're gonna come in, they're gonna set the racking. Throw the posts and that'll disturb some of the ground, so they'll have to clean it up a little bit, but the goal is. I've seen this on a few other sites that have been worked. It really worked well. Yes, certain parts of the site get dug up. Um, once it's been, once the grass starts to grow, but it's easier to fix it. You don't have ten acres of just. Their dirt draining, you know, offsite, which is what we absolutely don't want. So. That's why I did put that language in there. Um, and this site's relatively. Manageable because, you know, the, the primary area that we're cutting and clearing is on that eastern side. So we, we have a large portion of the site that doesn't require any cutting, any, any stump, any stump removal. It's mostly just fields, cleaning it up, doing a little bit of grading work, installing the driveway. So it, it should be. Manageable to. Cut everything like Rory said, stump that lower part, build out the base and then go move, you know, spray it and move on up. Stump the next section, spray that area, um, and hopefully get good growth. Relatively quickly before they come in and, um. Do the racking install because sometimes I found on other sites. It goes from it's cut, then it sits for, for two or three months. And then the racking goes in or there's a delay of some sort. So that's why I like to have it. So I specify such that it gets stabilized immediately.
Okay.
Uh, so letter B of, which one number are we on? Nine, right? Um, this is regarding, in regards to, um, the watershed, the modeling, um, that was provided. And using smaller watersheds or subwatersheds to model stormwater runoff. Um. And also to, you know, consider increased curve numbers of seventy-five to eighty-five. Um, regarding the watersheds, the subwatersheds, how, you know, they've been designed and, and modeled. Um, we didn't have an issue with the way it was modeled. Um, you can, you can micro-model. This, you know, to, to, I don't, you could just micro-model it, you know, i- if you wanted. Um, but because the, the receiving water of Eastbrook is, you know, by both legs of this wetland. Um, where water is going to go, we thought it was appropriate the way it has been modeled. Um. Regarding the curve numbers, um, I think we've talked about this previously. We, we, we are still satisfied with the curve numbers that are used in the analysis provided by the applicant. Um, one thing we did wanna note is, you know, the way that some of our modeling works with disconnected impervious. Um, you know, as, as a mass D E P, um. Kind of low-impact development technique is imper, is, is disconnected impervious. So it's pieces of impervious that aren't one big mass. And that's what this case is. So solar panels, the whole long strip isn't one impervious thing. There's breaks in between it where water does come through. Um. So again, you know, as long as this grass is there, especially where the grass, you know, where. The grass is receiving runoff from panels, being stabilized is really important. Um. I think that's it for that one.
The animal issue?
The animal issue.
Paragraph there on that page?
Decrease of erosion due to grazing animals. And, and I, I think that's, that's really, um, continuing to enforce. Um, maintain a grazing plan that it may, it may evolve over time. As you find animals are eating more or less, or, you know. It can't be a one and done kind of thing. Um, having the right vegetation there in the first place. Making sure that there's the right vegetation as the project ages. And that the grazing plan schedule is, um, adaptable to the actual site conditions. And will be adapted to site conditions. So again, I think we, we required, we recommended, talking too fast here. Um, that, you know, that the, the commission consider a condition around that.
And how do you, I noticed that in the, in the performance standards, it says that you can only plant native. Stuff underneath the panels. Um, but it's obviously you can't, the gra, grazing pastures aren't native stuff. So how do you, uh, reconcile those two things together? I'm sure they will when they finally come out with an agro-solar plan that's actually developed, they haven't at this point. Do you have any suggestions on that or?
I, is that to me or to the applicant?
Doesn't matter. Whoever has an answer.
I think that's, that's written into, you know, what this. In a condition where it's adaptable. We have to roll with what punches we find. As, you know, this isn't quite documented yet here.
So you don't consider that absolute? The need for native grasses?
Well, I think we always want native grasses, but. I don't know of any other solution at this time. I don't know if the applicant does.
We're gonna defer to our agricultural specialist once he's available. But if we can't get on the meeting, we'll respond in writing.
Okay. I mean, obviously, D E P must have considered this when they started allowing agri, agro-solar, but. It is, it is a conflict in the performance standards and the actual grazing plan.
Wish I could, I, I will get back to you.
Okay.
Make notes and make sure, right setup.
All right, letter C was in regard to nitrogen loading on the Scantic River. Um, you know, the Scantic River is not impaired for nitrogen currently. Um, it is within the, um, Connecticut River watershed, which is. Um, it is within the, um, Connecticut River watershed, which is impaired for nitrogen. Um, so what we have to do, or I guess the the long on sound is. Um. What we have to do on this site is to, you know, look at our nitrogen removal. Tools that we're using in infiltration basins to get a fifty to sixty percent nitrogen removal. So I think the stormwater controls that have been implemented. Are paying attention to nitrogen. Um. You know, and also that the vegetation uplift of that will also be helpful.
Nick, do you have anything to add to that?
No, uh, that's perfectly acceptable when the. Infiltration basins provide that. As they said, the vegetation will. Hopefully pull up a decent amount of that.
Yes.
I have another question on that. Um, as far as I believe Eastbrook. Does speak down to the Scantic. But it also, um. Possibly, and I'm not hydrologist. Engineer, but the question is, is that also is in close proximity to the town's public waters. Okay, um, so Eastbrook does.
It is.
Very close, so.
I'm not super concerned about that, but I am concerned about the fact that it's a cold water fishery. So. Just depends on your, both ways are make it important.
Nitrogen or E. coli from the. Those are questions.
Yeah, the E. coli question is a good one.
And and we know, we know for a fact that Scenic does catalyze. Something that I think needs to be.
We got somebody, somebody who's already on the scan.
So how would we deal with that? I mean, if we have it, if we have, if we have the water leaving the site or being collected on the site tested regularly. Which we do have a condition for. Um, I could add E. coli to that condition. I'm having it tested for P. Vos, but we could put, um.
I can't sleep with Caleb, but I don't think this is like, that concern is for like large massive farms. For like the number of animals that are on this farm. Again, I don't know, I'm an expert, may not have that large of an impact as others might think. That's what I believe Caleb will tell you. There's just not that many, uh, animals. They will be rotating as well, but some animals may not always be on site, maybe rotate to other sites. They may, they may come back to that site. So I just, I'll, I'll defer to Caleb, but that might be.
Okay.
I don't think, this is not a mass operation.
Am I hearing another question? Yes.
One animal is too many, is my concern. How many animals are going to be on this property? What is, I've not, I've heard there's going to be this, this, and this. What is the most thing?
That's the part that Caleb would have spoken to us about. So we'll have to wait till the seventeen. To ask specific questions about, I want to ask him questions about the fences. And about the numbers of animals and about how they manage the rotation. And those will all come up on the seventeen.
Boston, Judy, one of the comments, uh, the commission and the owners have made several comments about how there's wildlife. So there is existing wildlife on this property. And we're only taking up half of the acres. There will still be wildlife presence. So that delta between what is now and what will be there, that shouldn't be taken into consideration. I'm not fencing off the whole property. There is existing animals on there that I'm not.
It's also true that if it was a farm farm without a solar, there would be some, but there's just out, there's a flow speed. Increase that happens with the panels, which is a concern. We were talking about. Rip rap things, and that's part of it, is trying to catch. That speed of flow as it comes off the panels into the fields. If he was a farmer, you couldn't say one animal is too many. So you just have to take that into consideration. All right.
And then the last piece of this one was letter D, um, you know. Suggesting a condition, a monetary condition, um, for a future erosion event. I'm, you know. I think you need to talk with legal counsel about how that works. I don't know if you have.
We actually have a town bylaw that applies to that, and we're going to use it.
Okay.
We will have in the final bond, um, a section that's for, um. Storms and wastewater.
Is that during destruction or perpetuity? Just declare.
That's in perpetuity. That covers like, um. When you're ten years in and the climate has gotten a thousand times worse and suddenly we have a hubbongous storm. And it washes away half of the. B W, which has to be restored. The bonding money would go towards that. Otherwise, it's just held until the end, um, in a bond. And the planning board will also want to bond, and so that'll get combined together into. One big amount. Um, we did in that list of items, ask for an estimate for that part of the bond, for the wastewater, stormwater part of the bond. Um, and then we all basically, my understanding, but I have to talk to Brian about how this works. Is we submit that as our part of the bond and then they'll consider it when they actually draw it. So if you have, if you can get an estimate, that would be really good.
We can agree there's no major changes Nick and I can work on.
Okay.
That's okay. Sure.
Okay.
All right, and then, um, the last one was to talk about how stormwater works or how this is the whole facility will work, um, when considering a frozen condition. Um, you know, frozen conditions aren't something that are regulated or, um, you know, mass D E P doesn't. Require us to model what frozen conditions look like. Um. The difference between the existing site and the proposed site is that, you know, if the, if the site was completely frozen and we did have more, we had rain while everything was frozen. We have these basins, and these basins have been designed with an engineered outlet structure in the event that they fill up. So it's not just that, you know, once these basins fill up during a condition like that, water's going to break out over, you know, the entire berm. It's. Designed through a rip rap spillway. Um, and I think that's, you know, the safeguard that we have in place at this time. Um. This isn't, you know, modeling your frozen conditions isn't something that we typically do as part of, um, our hydrologic analysis, but it was a good question. So.
Okay.
Um, the last paragraph I have is just reiterating why. The grass is so important. And I know you're sick of hearing it from me.
No, I'm not sick of it. Okay, that's important.
That's a good question.
Yes.
So I want to go back to. Number. Three. Where the letter says that. River front standard has not been met because of some sort of stormwater item. Can I have some clarification on what we're referring to?
That's going to be the, um, mounting analysis.
Okay, just.
I think once we meet that, we're going to be okay.
All right. So everybody's clear because saying it doesn't comply or it doesn't meet the standards. Kind of direct.
Okay, so he does.
Could be a bunch of.
So he does that, he sends that to you and you'll let us know if it's adequate? Is that still within your peer review?
Yes, I can do that. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Now, now, what I, first of all, to make it clear, speaking on my own behalf, not on behalf of the selected. A couple of stormwater questions. Um, number one is that. And the, and the stormwater that was submitted for April, um, saw them, I think, four, three, four, three, eight. April twenty second, four, 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 I'm sure, thirty, thirty. It says, turbidity benchmark monitoring for B one, this journal. Says this development is not required to provide turbidity testing sample based on current classification of the receiving water, Indian Brook. Could you point out on the map where Indian Brook is?
No, sorry.
Has that been altered?
Yeah. I, I, I could double check that. The reality is the turbidity monitoring is for groundwater with mail, you're pumping groundwater, say, if you, that's for like a construction project.
Find out where Indian Brook is again.
That's for a project that you would be doing a major excavation, maybe that pump groundwater, new, new standard.
Could you point out where Indian Brook is?
He's saying, he's saying it was a typo and he's going to change it.
Not a typo. There's over twenty different bases in their, in their documents. Where they put the wrong address, the wrong town, the wrong, uh. Location, I'll give you another. They say on the stormwater report. They say that, uh, snow removal within the driveway should be allowed stockpile for all snow events with three to six inches of snow accumulation. That designated snow stockpile areas in order to provide clear access to the site on Franklin Brook. Anyone know where Franklin Brook is? One of my favorites is if there's a fire, it says tall and red go fire it. Right? Another one is if you have to shut off the grid, do it at Tom Haggay's road, which is also red.
So can you check through for all the typos?
Problem is, these are not typos, they're not grammatical errors, they're not spelling errors. They're cut and paste to show the lack of carelessness, disregard, and and, uh. Uncaring about the specific location and the types of property. If any, that's their message, they're very important, that they have to be very careful of what these people are saying. I can find out the other twenty if you have time. I hope tonight, because I know people, they all have.
Judy, may I respond to that comment?
Yes.
Because again, we've been out with the commission for two years. We've been through peer, three peer reviews for N O Is. Spent, what, twenty, twenty thousand dollars per year doing the documentation. We have delivered thousands of pages of documents to the commission. So it is well within the right of the individual to make the comments. But take a few, uh, you are correct, they are legacy notes. And to then compile those legacy notes and say that the applicant, because of these legacy notes in thousands of page documents. That they show not, they don't show care. I, I don't understand that logic.
They don't show care. If you spend that kind of money, you would have someone at least be able to review that.
Sir, there are thousands and thousands of pages, and I take responsibility. I personally take responsibility for not being there.
Well, you don't have to take responsibility. Nick is the one who signed the thing, said that he did.
Again, I, 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 I.
I certify and propel the law that this document is prepared under my direction and supervision. So the problem is. You're asking the town to accept an attached solar facility. In an area that we all know is environmentally sensitive, of runoff, and that. And you can't even get the town right. And you can't even get the location right. That's a problem. That's a credibility problem for you, not for me. I don't care how many documents you submitted. If you ever went to port a law and put documents that were incorrect like that, the judge would throw it out. You say, get out of here, come back. You know, in my business.
Sir, that's not a factual statement, Judy. I, I, I would like to, I respect the gentleman's individual to make his comments as a member of SLIP where he's allowed to do so. I disagree with this statement sincerely.
Nick will go through all of the. All of the papers before the next, before the seventeen. Or. Whatever they are, negligence errors.
And furthermore, if there's another application, there are eight applications, and I would bet money that there are multiple mistakes in multiple applications throughout this time. So to nitpick, I understand that this project has been controversial, but we have done our very best to put our best effort throughout the last two years. It's disheartening to have it going.
Okay.
Yeah, for the record. Majority of those items have been resolved.
Can't hear you.
A majority of those items have been resolved in the revisions, I believe, the gentleman was referring to.
Just turn one in.
Initial items.
And it's not about resolving typographical errors, grammatical errors, or spelling errors. It's about substantive things that you promised to do. And you don't even have the right street or the right. Indian Brook or the right location or the right. But I know it's all, and you had the wrong town, which you did. You had Glendale, it's going to happen, but you were correct. The point is, what credibility you have when you see those things, the document that people are tending to. For the safety of their water supply, of their environment, of their sanity, when, when the noise. So that's my point. And I think you need to really think a lot about that, to what you're thinking about that as well.
Okay. Uh, John?
I just have one question. I'm sorry, I got to go back to number one, I believe. Uh, that was the culvert we spoke about, any?
Yes.
So, um. If I'm correct, and I haven't reviewed the plan, um, the invert, we talked about the culvert. I lost it. Is it going to be a smooth I D or irrigated?
Yep.
I D inside diameter, um, smooth or irrigated. Because it does have an effect on the wall.
Nick?
It's smooth. It's smoother than you would have.
And and I would note that we haven't made a final determination about. Whether that's going to be a culvert next to the property line or a bridge that. Goes a bit into the B B W. I still strongly favor the bridge.
I favor the bridge, Ted.
Ted?
What?
Do you have a, do you prefer the bridge or the?
I prefer the bridge.
I think we just took a vote.
Doesn't work that way. No, I think that's all.
Who's there?
Who's there?
Who is that?
I don't know.
Anonymous.
I don't know who's vote.
Who's, um, speaking? Hello? All right, um, so we'll ask for the bridge. And we won't include any E W intrusion in the. Uh. You don't have to change all those calculations because it's only about, I figured it out and it's only going to be a few square feet.
Judy, I would ask that the commission, uh, I believe that is a significant cost for to make a bridge, like a significant step, so. To make this decision, I would ask that the commission, um, pay that in consideration for making that very quick decision.
Well, honestly, I think the planning board may make the decision for us and send it back anyway.
I agree.
So I think it might save all the. All the going back and forth of it, if we just do it.
I would ask the commission to allow the planning board to make their decision about the waiver, and if I have to come back, we'll have to move the whole road.
Is that reasonable, John? I know you can't speak for the planning board, but you have been on the planning board.
And I, and I, and I did upframe the center by. And. I'm going to say this again, the hundred foot border should be sanctified. It should not be invaded. It was specifically put in when we wrote the bylaw to protect the residents around the soul. Now specifically says in a residential area which this is proposed. Okay, that hundred foot. Should not be. It is.
So for the record, it's a fifty foot clearing setback.
Well, there's two.
And a hundred foot structure setback. That's, and we're asking for a waiver. So we don't have to fill and disturb a resource area. I understand the town's position, but the way D E P will look at this, they will see that there's an alternate pathway. That doesn't require a direct disturbance of a resource area. I can. That's to ask Ty and Bond about this, but. They would possibly appeal the commission's decision to require us to fill wetland when there's a known pathway. That does not require.
I will.
Disturbance to a resource.
I will send a question to Mark Stinson and ask him if D E P has a preference.
But didn't he already say that he would not violate any town zone?
But didn't he already say that he would not violate any town zone? Yeah, I thought so.
No, he doesn't, he didn't say that. I, that, I had set that discussion separately, but D E P didn't say they wouldn't violate any town zoning and they didn't say they would demolish any town zoning. What, what D E P says is they have nothing to do with zoning, so they will ignore it. So it, when we were talking about the no disturb zone, um, I got a letter and they said, you know, uh, Mark said they would, they would um wipe out the no disturb zone or they would, you know, it's, they just don't consider it. They don't take any municipal laws or any zoning into consideration in their review. It doesn't mean they would make you get rid of it or take out everything that is in there. It just means they don't consider it at all. It's not, because can you imagine if they had to consider every towns for three hundred and however many towns it is um, each separate municipal law? So they, they just don't. They only take state law.
So for us to fill a wetland per the state regulations, we have to comply with the performance standards, which we have to document. There's no other way to gain access to the upland area in the westerly part of the site.
I, I, I understand that.
No, I understand the argument, but I will, I am gonna, I use, I use Mark as my consultant. So I go to him, I ask him the typical question, he gives me an answer.
Action against the decision that the commission renders, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
Mark is okay with it, and you get something of writing from Mark, then I wouldn't say we're more than happy to fill the wetland, but we'll move the driveway and do what the commission.
We're trying to compromise, we know planning boards.
But, no, we understand, but I mean, there has to be balance, right? With, we have to prove that there's, that's the only way. So I can't put that on paper and say this is the only way when we can ask for the waiver for that section, whoever is two hundred feet that we would have to clear in that fifty foot zone to avoid a direct resource area and then that makes sense.
I, I understand what you're saying. I'm not sure that, that that's the advice I'll get. I'll just find out.
Well, there's no.
But we did do a sketch as requested on what it could look like. Take a look.
Yes, you wanna put that up?
Talking about it. It's not final, it's, it's just a sketch.
What am I looking for?
Oh, let's.
It says, that sketch of, it's at the beginning of the top like there.
Sketch, yes. So that is essentially what we'd be looking at, so uh that black dashed line is the fifty foot.
What's the maximum span of that sort of bridge that you can get? In other words, how, how big an opening? I'm trying to figure out where you can put it in the wetlands. It takes some reasonable compromise of land loss.
So for the record, it's a bridge, it's a three sided open.
Okay, a three sided open, a lot of culvers. So what's the span that you can get for the flow area?
For the flow area, I believe those come in ten to twelve foot widths. It's detailed, you zoom in on the uh, top left corner there. I think it's ten or twelve.
I mean, I presume they come in various sizes.
Well, it's a, well, I think anything wider than that, then would turn into a bridge, it quadruples the cost. It's uh, it becomes very, very costly. You know, for something that would need a wider span, you can see on the bottom of the, the the detail there, you put two together.
Yeah.
So I think ten to twelve feet is the max span, which is plenty openness for that channel. You know, so we're, you know, when we're looking at how big we would make this opening, you know, we would use the stream crossing standards to provide the required openness, which is a ratio between the open area, so like the cross section area that's open and the length. And I believe that if you go down, it's a little bit uh, more detailed there. I go with the stream crossing standards, I think it can't be more than a ratio of point eight two, so it's uh my shoots here.
Okay.
I guess my question is if you had, let's say, three or four ignoring costs, would it be less disturbance to the wetland?
We're still gonna have to dig that whole area.
You're still gonna have to dig.
Gotta put the footings in, uh, we just need about three foot wide concrete footings, which are set on, you know, six inches of.
You, you, you would, you would disturb it in the beginning, but would nature then take its course and fix itself?
Oh, yeah, there would be a wetland disturbance and we'd replicate wetland area, uh. You know, the goal here is to, we're not spanning the wetland, we don't span the wetland, we span the stream.
Well, I understand. I'm trying to see if there's a way to span the wetlands a little bit.
Not a cost effective way.
Not a cost effective.
Could you pull that down?
It'd be like an eighty foot long structure. Just doesn't make sense.
Okay, I'm
So you're saying you would have, you put in footings.
So if you zoom in where that blue line is, that's about where the channel.
That's the stream.
And see those like little hatched uh logs.
Like here, the plus sign, you're about that, see the plus sign there.
So these, this, these would be the footings, right?
No.
Right here.
That one?
Yeah. This one, is there?
Oh, that one there. The plus sign, right there. Well, there's six plus signs. Yeah. That one there.
Okay, now pull it over.
So these would be footings, and then you have, you know, essentially a crane would come in and just drop that, you know, once you kind of dig those out um, and set that, set those on crushed stone, that crane would come in, drop that one piece.
So the digging out isn't that whole span from there to the edge of the wetlands, it's just those two?
But we would have to then fill, these are retaining walls, because to have.
Yeah, then you have something set on.
Right? So
Right.
We're, we're, before we had the, the culvert, the pipe, which was at the same elevation as the stream channel. Now we're like four or five feet higher, so we have to ramp up to this to get to that openness, which is, I think I have at least thirty, thirty-six or forty-two inches roughly of open air space.
Excuse me.
So you have to ramp up to that.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Is there a way on Zoom for the people watching to be able to see this, this sketch? Cause, because they're only seeing, they're seeing the crowd.
Oh, just seeing me.
Yeah, they see you, but they don't actually see the sketch. Is there a way to fix that?
I know.
Okay.
But I'm a hand to.
I thought whenever we were listening, they could see.
That's, that's what I thought too.
Yeah, you can share that.
So the reality with this, you know, things that D E P, well, I feel that D E P would take into consideration are you have, now you have a two thousand square foot wetland disturbance, you have a lot more permanent structures. The retaining walls are longer, they're higher. Um, you have direct burial over footing. You know, it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's a question.
But we'll ask D E P. I, that's the only answer that I, that I can give you.
If they don't.
We have to ask. Um, Jean, do you have an opinion about that? She's still there?
It tends to make life easier. If you made me host.
I'm here, I was moved. Sorry. Um, I wasn't really sure what we were talking about for a lot of it.
Okay, this, the bridge that at the northern crossing where it goes against the northern property lines? It goes right up against the northern property line and we have a sketch proposal for a bridge that would be moved out of the planning board's setback zone essentially.
And I see that sketch. We have that, yep.
Okay, um, do you, um, Nick's argument is that if he sends that to D E P, they're gonna make him put it back at the northern property line. Do you? You know more about what D E P rejects and doesn't?
Well, and I may ping Melissa on this one too. She knows D E P really well. I, I don't, I don't know what they would do, honestly. I really don't. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't think I do either. Okay, thank you. Um, does anybody have any more questions for Jean? Cause she's just hanging around here and she'd probably like to go home.
I had a question.
Yes.
It seemed like the rep from Ty and Bond thought a critical piece was keeping that grass healthy.
Yes.
Who is ultimately responsible for taking care of that grass and making sure that, is it the solar guys? Farmer, who has?
That's a good question.
Animals, grazing, is it Caleb? Who's ultimately responsible for that grass?
The, 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 the advocate. The, 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 the advocate, the company that, that owns the project is responsible for the grass.
It's not you?
I will be responsible for all of the inside, as long as I own the company and for all, this is Ben Arrow, and this is our plan. Anything inside that fence area is my responsibility.
So.
So even for the whole length of the project?
You don't do it yourself? You hire somebody? Have, is there?
Well, Jonathan is a landscaper too, so Jonathan, the landowner, the next thing is landscaper professionally. And we, we will hire somebody to do it professionally and monitor it and submit reports to the commission. Nick does this, there's a variety of people that I, that can be used.
Uh, there was a question back there?
But I think it's very tricky.
No, honestly.
See people try and grow the grass and it's not easy.
But the commission will make me, because they will, they will sign off on my project until I'm dead.
Any of your other projects, have you had any trouble getting the grass to over time, over several years?
Don't clear in November. But if you don't clear in November, and you clear like in the spring, and you do have growth, then no, I don't.
For example, had a problem.
Not if you were clearing in appropriate time. I had cleared in November and then nothing grows, because it gets cold and then that's, that's more. But if I, if I'm clearing in April or May or June, July, yeah, it grows, everything grows.
That would be part of what the monitoring would be for, especially that first year to make sure if there's a big storm, is it staying? Is it washing away? You know? If there, is the number of animals that are on it too many? Cause that can also make it sparse, et cetera, et cetera. All those things. Uh, somebody back there had a question? Over there. Okay.
I drive by a lot of solar panels, unfortunately, I never see great vegetation underneath it. It mostly looks like rocks and weeds to me. Um, so I'm not sure how you're gonna get this grass to grow, but my other question is the, uh, you said we were gonna have to use a crane to put those holes in, is that what you said? How would those?
Oh, it's like the racking?
Yeah, then we were just talking about that.
Bridge, the culvert.
Were we talking about the culvert or the, or the, or the panels?
Like, just like a regular Astro crane, you know, traveling eight wheel crane to, to pick it up and put it in. It'd be too heavy for like a, a large excavator to pick up.
Can you hear what he's saying?
No, not really.
He said it would be too large for a normal excavator, so they would have to bring in a crane that would put it in.
So does that contradict what you said earlier, that you have to bring in a crane? I'm thinking of a crane, I've seen them, they're pretty big. But earlier you said you weren't really gonna need a lot of big machinery.
Oh, that was just for the riverfront restoration. My concern was, were they gonna bring large equipment in along the river they're trying to restore and be tamping it down at the same time as they're fixing it up? This has a road that goes right up to that bridge.
Yes.
Fixed road.
So they could come in on that road.
I look like, pretty much be behind it. There's a lot of wildlife back there that I'm, you know, concerned about.
So if you want to ask Melissa about her thoughts on the culvert and going through and filling the wetland when there's a viable route to the north.
Melissa?
She may be able to provide some insight with wetland performance standards and.
Do you have comments?
So, uh, you know, similarly, uh, you, you've got to demonstrate avoid, that you've avoided, minimized, and finally mitigated. Avoidance altogether is, you know, in the context of the Wetlands Protection Act is the preference. Um, especially since it means you're not, you know, further encroaching upon another resource area. You know, if there are you know, whether or not there are extenuating circumstances could be a consideration of that particular alternatives analysis. But in the context of the Wetlands Protection Act, avoidance would be the preference. Because mitigating and mitigation essentially requires um, one-to-one replacement at a minimum. And it needs to be successful within two growing seasons. Not to make light of growing grass, but that's a more significant commitment to replicate the functions and values of a vegetated wetland than it is to just grow grass. So alteration in the buffer zone versus direct alteration of a resource area is uh, you know, doesn't have the same effect on functions and values.
Okay, any other questions?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Dave Schmidt, five, six Glendale. Um, so I, I think the gentleman at the corner started to answer the question of how many animals? And then I didn't get the exact answer. When did we find out how many animals, what they are?
The agricultural guy was gonna be here this evening.
Yeah.
He was unable to connect. So we're gonna ask for him to come back on the seventeenth to a, answer the agricultural questions.
But Judy, isn't he just their consultant?
Yes.
Would the applicant answer that question, how many animals he's gonna have?
I don't think that, Jonathan, do you have any answers to that? You haven't talked about how many it might be.
We have, but because the project has changed in size and he can get a rough idea.
Are we talking tens, twenties, thirties?
Judy, I'm telling you that we need one sheep per acre to do the grass割. So I'm gonna have, say, twenty sheep on there. That's a number. I, I can't specify other numbers. Uh, I'm happy to get back information today after. But if you want sheep, it's one sheep per acre.
Okay, thanks. That, that does help. It gives me a sense.
Was it just sheep or?
No, sheep, cattle, and chickens.
So they produce six amount of animal per day and then I guess the town is gonna carry to make out that may or may not run off into the Scantic River?
Well, we were talking about that. The, the, the issue is not to have it run off into the Scantic River. The issue is to stop it before it goes anywhere near the river. So that idea is to have it stopped by the basins and the, and the grass and the other sorts of uh berms or whatever. And not, it, there is no plan to have it go into the river. It should go into the ground and then into the river.
Filtered through the ground.
But yeah, it is an issue if there's too many animals that, that could theoretically happen, cause they could eat too much grass.
But Judy, especially the animals right now on property, right? Are causing nitrogen and all other things to go in the river right now on a continuous basis that have been done for the last fifteen years. There's been no regulation on this. There's no, like, there's no, no number of how many animals or, there's, this has been happening continuously.
Those are squirrels.
No, there are a few farm animals there now, is what he's saying.
Don't you think the panels kind of alter the flow of the?
Yes, they do.
Yes.
They do.
A little different than current environment.
Okay, anything else, Jean, um, Melissa?
Yeah, I think so. I think we're good.
Yes?
Four, four times, yeah.
Okay.
You should put our, our number, well. Um, I just would have a question for the girls from Ty and Bond. Um, I was wondering, did you guys, um, uh, take into consideration any of Dr. Garabedian's um, recommendations slash um comments about um, uh, at the last meeting?
That would be Jean, cause it's stormwater.
I didn't get the beginning of that. We were not.
He's wondering if you considered uh, Dr. Mr. Garabedian's uh comments. Uh, she does make a comment in the peer review about other input. Um, and I think she said it. Go ahead.
As, as I recall, he was quite concerned about um the basins, stormwater basins, that they, that any.
Stormwater basins that they that any um uh kind of disagreed with you guys.
Yeah, we, I think we disagree on the curve numbers, like with the final, well, how the final condition of the site will shed water. Um, but he also did bring up the points about um the infiltration basins and the groundwater mounding where bedrock is and things like that. That we did note in our most recent round of comments for the applicant to review and respond to.
And have they, you haven't responded?
No, she just asked him tonight.
Oh, okay.
So they will do that, they will send it to her and she will see uh if she's satisfied with that.
Oh. And how do we email them?
She will tell us.
And then you'll tell us at the next.
At the next meeting, yeah, she's only contracted for this one meeting, but as a favor essentially, she's gonna do that extra review and send it to us.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
As you know, the area that we live in is it's very rocky. So this may seem like a strange question, but is is the property going to be, I don't I don't know what the word for it is, but. Is it tested for how much rock?
Yes, they do extensive um both coring and test pits. Um, test pits are kind of like those perk tests.
Okay.
That you do when you're building a house, only they did a whole bunch all over the place. And they did coring to see what kind of soil it is, which also answers some of those questions about where the bedrock is. How, where the clay layers are that don't let the water travel through and all those sorts of things. That was mostly considered um in the Anrad review last year when we were talking about. Which soil was where and what kind of soil it was.
Okay, because we're not just talking like boulders, let's talk.
No, this, there's a huge section of this property that has um clay, stony soil. Um, a high uh high levels of of uh impermeability in some sections.
Okay, so if this were to go through, all of that would be tested prior to anything going in.
Yes, but it's already been all tested.
Listen to three years of drilling rock.
No.
No. It wouldn't be useful for them to drill rock because they're not putting in anything, that's that's a big structure that would take that for a foundation. And they can't use it for drainage.
So.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not there, I'm saying they they don't have a reason to go down to it. To bedrock.
But what about the the conduits, didn't you say there would be six feet underground, ten feet?
But if there's, if if there's ledge there, I can't do that, I I didn't. If there's if there's ledge or bedrock, it's fifty, then I'll maybe go to three feet. Make sense?
Yeah.
And so then, I'm like free drilling, it'll be no more than two. And then you can. Free drill and then drill a nation screw.
Yes.
Rory, um, you said you manage and control everything within the fence.
Correct, sir.
Okay, so regarding the livestock grazing, who's managing that?
We will have a a contract with the landlord to manage that, since he has a.
So he will be moving the cattle and sheep.
Property, it'll have a a service agreement to manage place throughout the life of system.
Another question. That contentious area where where you're invading the buffers in the neighborhood. Because of um environmental concerns. Is there no other way? From the property owner from a different direction to the to the back to. Access that side of the solar field.
I wish, unfortunately there's not.
Oh, you you're proposing they go onto Jonathan's property to do that?
I think, I think we're wrong, but you were.
I don't think it helps.
I went earlier with the parcel, so.
Yeah, what's what's north of this crossing is a butter par- property, but not Jonathan's, it's.
And what about to the east, to the east, I mean, there's there's no other access point. Through any of the owner's property?
Unfortunately, there was a big wetland going right down the middle parcel, that kind of like fiber gates. To east and east and west, and so I. If there was, we would definitely have taken it, but unfortunately, I I see no alternative route to get into that.
Yeah, could you pull up the main map, Brian?
Second sheet.
Okay, so here's here's what might be in somebody's mind, if you went, your ray one is south. And then you went around all the way by Eastbrook and you went up into your extra array. I don't think that's possible because you end up in riverfront, right?
I don't know, I don't.
That one?
Yeah, that one. I go to the front. So just.
All the way up?
Okay, so theoretically, if instead they went down the road. See, that road that's there now isn't going to be there, they're taking it out. The that south uh loop.
So what what?
But what if you went out?
Trying to get to here, right?
Yeah.
To get here and up here, and what is going on is, so here's the brook. Riverfront zone, and then we have the wetland which kind of goes up, if you you hit that minus a couple of times. Two, let's scroll down a little bit. So if you follow my finger, right, so the wetland ties into the brook, so off the property, so we show it, it comes up. And then it goes down, and then it comes up again, and then it comes around, meanders all the way down, all the way to the brook.
Yeah, so the answer is no, there's no space to get around to there.
That's the only place, that's why we have it there, if there was another place, we'd. Go for it, but there there really isn't.
So the question would be, if it's so contentious to cross over to the uh. Wetlands, why don't we just eliminate that solar fence section?
So it's a financial hardship, you you you're cutting out too much of the project that just don't don't finance the lot.
We have to. Um, I could find the thing to read to you, but basically, all of the performance standards have to do with within. Uh viability, within reasonable viability. Um, if if he can't figure out a way to do the project. That's viable, then it would be his choice to not build it. But our our thing is to evaluate it within viability, it's a funny um. wording of the question. I'm looking for a very particular piece here. When when they have to do their alternatives analysis, the alternative analysis is. There they had to submit all the alternatives they could think of, in- including buying other land in somewhere else in Hamden. Um.
So that's that's for riverfront disturbance.
And yes, that's for.
But but this is, this would only be wetland disturbance, there.
But basically, they do come down to the same question, which is that. They, you're looking at either doing a viable project or not doing a project. So our job is to see if enough conditions essentially can be added to it to make it. Allowable from our wetlands viewpoint and still be viable from their viewpoint. And that's why people have have said, you know, it feels like we're giving in to them or we're negotiating with them, and in a way, it is a negotiation. We're saying, can you shrink it down here and do that and still have it be viable?
You have to remember, they already took out a big chunk of it down in the lower right corner.
If if they decide that with the conditions we feel we have to have, it's not viable, they can withdraw the project. But our job is to put in, put all the conditions on it that we feel are necessary to protect the wetlands, and that's all we get to talk about. We're talking about the bridge mostly because we're trying to respect the planning board, which is coming, and not make them replan the project three times. Otherwise, we just have it against the border, but I personally felt that was pretty hard on the abutters. Besides the planning board, sacred. Border property, yes, sacrosanct setback. Yes.
Only problem I have with that is um. You uh. You said at the last meeting, it was.
I don't understand.
You said at the last meeting that uh it was a conflict between the property uh fifty foot.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
There, what what Nick was saying earlier is that. By this, by the wetlands performance rules and the other standards. They should be avoiding that area outlined in green at all costs. And that puts them up there in the no disturb zone.
Sure.
But the planning board has a fifty foot setback and a hundred foot setback, and if they try to take that into consideration. They run across the wetlands. There is no rule that you can't run across wetlands, it's just that you have to make all efforts. To destroy as little of the wetlands as possible and you have to mitigate any that you destroyed. All the regulations are like that, they're all. Um, I wish that we had a set of checklist and then we could just say meets the checklist or doesn't meet the checklist, but it's all. Balance between those two things.
But I would think the conservation issue, you're right, right?
What?
All here is to protect um the wetlands that you will.
It is, but we always try to take into consideration the abutters. And if you're the person that lives on that property line, you don't necessarily want those trucks going right next to your property. So there's that.
Yeah.
If you take, if you. If you take it for instance, when we have all these reviews of the phone poles, power poles going in, a lot of them are going in wetland. What would, what would be if we said you can't put the power pole, you wouldn't have electricity, you have to, you have to balance.
But it's true, it's not just.
Be reasonable.
Yeah, it's not just for this parcel, it's for any parcel, so if somebody's building a house and. When the parcels were made, some of the parcels are very, very small. And trying to fit a house in there and not be on the wetlands is really hard, so. We. But it's evaluated by exactly the same rules, we don't have separate rules for. Because it's on a residential property essentially, but also it's it's evaluated by the same regulations, so. We often have to, uh, there's a house on Chapin where there was no possible way to move it. Anything more than twenty-five feet from the stream. And we were not happy about that, they turned the house sideways to get it in there. But they did turn the house sideways.
So they they did, they turned the house.
But a a lot of, but it still was in stream, it was still in riverfront, it was, well, in the, actually in in buffer. Because it was an intermittent stream, but but the point is, there's almost always. Some compromises, and so we're always balancing reality like it is a building parcel first versus. Where we would really like them not to be. All the time.
The company here, so the company uh went into it almost. Like you said, wow, two years.
All of them take this long.
All of them take this long.
They'll take four and five years.
May I make a call, Thomas, I actually went to all the boards, I went to the board select them, I went to the planning board, the conservation, all before I ever submitted an application, I was like. You please look at this, and if you see something that you don't like, or you don't want me here, tell me to go away, because I'll go away. So I there are public records in each, I have three different meetings, like.
We did tell them all the problems that we saw, we did.
Yes, man, before I ever submit an application, because if I have a talent that really doesn't like me, I'm not into, I don't want this, this is not my goal, this is.
You don't want, you don't want it, make it pretty clear.
I get, I have to, I'd like to build, I like neighbors or like, if I had this opposition before I submitted an application, I don't know that I would have ever submitted. I didn't hear this.
You did know, sir, people were coming in the Enrad meetings, they were very unhappy and you chose to.
Maybe we should cut this, yeah, okay, I don't think this is helpful.
Yeah, no, this last night.
So nineteen, so I think at this point, if you allow this access to all, whether it's. You know, unless it's top of the building property lines lower, we're totally going to be encroaching on the twenty-five foot no disturb zone, correct?
No, not with the bridge.
Well, we would be encroaching on a lower section of the no disturb.
Same, the same issue still applies.
It's just a larger uh area of it.
Okay.
So it'd be more twenty-five foot no disturb.
More and VW. Um, before we leave, and we're getting really late here, um, we need to uh talk about the boundary markers. Um, because technically, uh, the way that we normally do it, we would be having them put boundary markers all the way around. That center area. And the question is, um, do you want those big giant um PVC posts in there? Around that entire area, do you want an alternative? Uh, how do you, I've written the condition, but I haven't made the specifications yet.
Is there something smaller that could be but permanent?
Well, that was my thought, can we come up with something permanent that's smaller, that's not so, I'm just worried about that many. Big old things going in, on the other hand, it is the rules, so.
Right. Is this reconstruction or post-construction?
It's just, it's the second that the light site is graded at that area. And then you do it, so it's pre.
Control barrier and uh we could do. Something, we could put orange, they have like a bright orange, a road control fence, which is very.
No, we're not talking about that, we're talking about permanent boundary markers. So the permanent boundary markers we require normally. Is that at every foot, every fifty feet and every turn, you have a post. That's either like a lolly column, you know, those big metal columns, or a piece of PVC that's equivalent to that size. That.
Concrete, or concrete.
Filled with concrete, that's that sticks eighteen inches minimum out of the ground.
Yep.
And stays there.
Forever, forever.
Essentially forever, unless there's a new delineation that it has to be moved, so these are permanent wetland protectors, so to speak. But under our normal, we have this specification for every single thing that's built. But I'm saying that the normal requirements that we have, I think. Will be bulky and a lot of holes.
There'd be a lot of them.
And maybe we need to think about a a skinnier alternative that would be equally permanent.
Could you utilize the fence and put placards on it that say beyond this area is a.
A fence isn't permanent.
Yeah.
But it will be permanent to the installation.
This is permanent.
The fence.
Permanent?
Yes.
Fence will be wood, right?
Uh, yeah.
The inner fence will be wood.
Post, wire mesh to make it more.
This is forever.
You, when when somebody wants to use a fence on their own property, like say it's a square area and they just want to put. They have to put those posts in as some of the fence posts. Did you want me to go get one? Yes, please, and now I'll mail it to you. I have it right on my desk, okay. So. Do you want it?
Yes, options there.
So they basically have to be posted, or posted, the conservist fence post. Permanent, but not wood, because wood rots off.
So if we change the fencing to metal posts in that area, could we kind of double up? Someone, because we do have. Some of it, because we do have fence that kind of goes on the, we're looking at this part here. Those, you know, it, it skirts the whole.
The purple line.
Yeah, for the most part. Because of this part, we are, you know, right up on the twenty-five-foot, uh, no disturb zone up, you know, up through here. Then obviously, when we get back here, we could do more of the posts.
Just to show them what.
Oh.
Person posts.
Jonathan, do you have any input about that?
How pretty comes? This is only one, it's, it's okay. So how does it need to be, uh, PVC?
What?
But see, most of the time we're talking about house, house loud.
No, it has to be eighteen inches out of the ground.
Um, but that is a reactive.
It has, the point is to stick up so that, um, ten years from now, if somebody's mowing, they don't mow into that area or whatever.
You can find it on GPS.
Awesome. Yeah.
You may not be here in a year.
Yeah.
You may not be.
We do, we do require you to mark each of the posts that's required with the GPS, uh, marker. That way we can go back and make sure nobody switched it around. But if you, you.
Yeah.
I will leave it till the seventeenth, but, um, you can try to come up with something that you think is, you, I'll send you our requirements and you can try to. Some people put in, um, stone posts. It's expensive, but it's much prettier.
Yeah, some of the, you know.
So there, you are allowed to propose an alternate is what I'm saying within our normal rules. So if you can propose an alternate and the folks will think about it.
There's going to be a lot. That's what I just showed.
We could. It's very bendy for two years. That will mark.
Wow, if you go behind the police station. To the woods.
Yeah.
Well, they're not into, they're not going to be doing that right now anyway.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, no, it's not till everything gets approved, but we just need to have that.
Right.
Okay.
So while if you, police station there every fifty feet, they're following the place, now wetland back there, you still have. The time bond out here.
Yeah. Um, I'm, this is Time Bond's last meeting, so it's your last chance to ask a question. Okay, and we will send you those, or Nick will send you those materials. Thank you, Melissa and Jean. You've been very, very patient.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
You.
Bye.
Okay, we will, um, see everybody on the seventeenth.
Are you in there?
I move that we close the meeting.
Second. Hi.
Okay, the hearing is closed.
Wait a minute, you're not going to close it?
We can't. We have to vote.
You have to vote again.
Um, I, I move that we continue this meeting to the seventeenth.
Second.
All the favor. All those opposed. I move that we close the meeting.
Second.
All those opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Rory.
You still want to write?
I can do that one, you know.
Are you going in?
First understanding?
Yeah. Because I, because I think it just makes sense. We'll just get it.
Would be metal.
We'll go through the agriculture thing. We'll.
It's almost like a problem.
And that will be.